Good afternoon and welcome to the regular Salina City Commission Weekly Meeting. This is January 13, 2020. I'd like to ascertain that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Mayor Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Here.
If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This will be a meeting with many different flavors. We have some exciting parts, but we also have some business that we have to take care of today, so please be patient. We will start with awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the month of January 2020 is National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month in the city of Salina. Andrew Lagerman, D-VAC victim advocate, will read the proclamation.
Hello, good afternoon. I must apologize, Andrew was unable to attend today, so I am here in place of him. I am Sheila Beeson, and I am the sexual assault advocate at D-VAC, so sorry about that. So, thank you for letting me take the time to read this proclamation today. Whereas millions of men, women, and children are victims of human trafficking, which is the second-largest and fastest-growing criminal industry in the world, whereas human trafficking denies victims' basic human dignity and freedom and is based on recruiting, harboring, and transporting people through use of force, fraud, and/or coercion for the purpose of sexual exploitation or forced labor. It is a crime that can take many forms and tears at our social fabric, debases our common humanity, and violates what we stand for as a country. Whereas, the U.S. Justice Department has identified Kansas as an originating state for human trafficking, and most trafficking in Kansas involves local children. Whereas, in 2018, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas provided advocacy and emergency supportive services to 13 victims of human trafficking. Whereas, with improved victim identification, medical and social services, training for first responders, and increased public awareness, the victims who have suffered this cruel crime can overcome the bonds of modern slavery, receive protection and justice, and successfully reclaim their rightful independence. And whereas, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas is joining forces with victim service providers, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Central Kansas and the United States to observe National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Together, we can commit to a society where our sense of justice tells us that united we can eradicate this wrong and continue to fight for human dignity and the rights of every person. Now therefore, the city of Salina, Commissioners hereby proclaim January 2020 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, and applauds the effort of the many victim service providers, police officers, prosecutors, national and community organizations, and private sector supporters for their efforts in opposing human trafficking in all its forms.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any efforts underway this month?
We sure do. At the end of this month, January 31st, from noon to 1:00, we are having a D-VAC luncheon learn, stalking and human trafficking. So, it's going to be two parts. Everybody's free to stop by the library over the lunch hour, and there'll be resources available, there'll be tools to identify and prevent these crimes. And so, from 12:00 to 12:30, we will be talking about stalking, and then 12:30 to 1:00 it will be about human trafficking. So, if anybody from the public is free to attend, they're welcome to come and learn more. And if anything, feel free to call D-VAC, and we'd be happy to answer questions, help provide resources to those that are either recognized or identify it, or experiencing themselves. And then, we do have Whitney, and she's also here today on behalf of Abby, so poor Abby is out sick too, so we apologize. So, she'll be next.
Come forward, I'll give you a signed proclamation.
Item 3.2, the month of January 2020 is National Stalking Awareness Month in the city of Salina. I'll just announce it as Whitney, I'm not sure her last name. We'll read the proclamation.
Whereas stalking is intentional harassment, a pattern of behavior directed at a specific person, causing that person to feel fear and endangerment for themselves or their family. The variation in stalking behavior ranges from hang-up phone calls to more direct threats toward a victim. The likelihood of injury increases when the stalking behavior escalates over time. Whereas, under the laws of the city of Salina and all jurisdictions in the U.S., stalking is a crime. Whereas, the majority of victims are stalked by someone they know, typically an ex-dating partner or acquaintance, and three in four women killed by an intimate partner had been stalked by that same intimate partner. Whereas, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas assisted 25 people who identified stalking as their primary victimization in 2018 with an array of services including counseling and group support, crisis hotline call reception, information and referrals, criminal justice advocacy, civil court advocacy, protection order and medical help, safety planning and transportation. Whereas, the Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports that 190 protection from stalking orders were filed in Saline County in 2018. Whereas, the statistics do not represent the true incidence and prevalence of stalking for multiple reasons, including not all victims report the crime to law enforcement, and stalking is a tactic of domestic violence and sexual abuse, so it may not be reported as the primary form of abuse and victimization, although the victim has experienced stalking along with other forms of abuse. Whereas, many stalking victims are forced to protect themselves by relocating, changing their identities, changing jobs, and obtaining protection orders. Whereas, many stalking victims lose time from work and experience serious psychological distress, and lost productivity at a much higher rate than the general population. Whereas, communities can better combat stalking by raising awareness, adopting multidisciplinary responses by teams of local agencies and organizations, and by providing more and better victim services. And now therefore, the city of Salina Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim January 2020 as National Stalking Awareness Month.
Thank you. You will be participating in the event on the 31st as well?
Yes.
And if someone suspects that they are stalking, where is their first resource for help?
They can call D-VAC, or they can get a protection order at the courthouse themselves or the police.
Okay, thank you, and I'll give you your signed proclamation.
Item 3.3, the day of January 20th, 2020 is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Day in the city of Salina. Eleanor Jones of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Ad hoc Committee will read the proclamation.
Thank you. Good afternoon to our mayor and Dr. Trent W. Davis, city commissioners, other city employees, friends and neighbors and enemies. Being a local soloist in town, I do know how to recognize my audience. Proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. the year of 2020, whereas the 20th day of January is the birthday anniversary of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas, Dr. King stood before the entire world as a man of peace, champion of human dignity, and an example of love and brotherhood. And whereas, the citizens of Salina do recognize Dr. King's contribution to the good of all humankind, and they do desire to perpetuate and implement the ideals expressed in his dream of peace and harmony among all individuals. And whereas, in paying tribute to Dr. King, we are reminded that the duty lies with each of us to fulfill the vision of his life's work. Let us never give up as we use our time, talents, and resources to give back to our community and help those less fortunate than us. Particularly today, let us not forget Dr. King's own tireless spirit and efforts as we work, celebrate, and pray alongside people of all backgrounds. As one people, let us rediscover the bonds of love and loyalty that bring us together as Americans and as people who share a common humanity. Now therefore, I, Michael L. Hoppick, mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the day of January 20, 2020, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Day, and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in extending recognition and honor to the memory of this great leader of humankind. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this day, January 13, 2020.
Thank you, and I will explain why all the eyebrows are up when proclamations are submitted for printing. We have edits, and Mayor Hoppick will be reading this later in the week, but because this is still happening before he's mayor, my name will be on the proclamation.
I'm reading what I was given.
And I will give you a copy of the signed proclamation. Are there other events going on this week to commemorate Dr. King's day?
I will read those if you allow me to. Celebrating the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., January 13 through 20, 2020. Our theme is "Never Give Up." Monday, January 13, 2020, the proclamation has been read, and on Saturday, January 18, at 6:00 p.m. at New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church, 321 North 8th Street, the Community Potluck Dinner. Bringing dish to share, drinks and tableware will be provided. On Sunday, January 19, 2020, 3:30 p.m., the citywide celebration will be held at New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church. The speaker, Dr. Adrian Douglas, president of Cloud County Community College, and the music provided by various soloists and sing-along selections with attendees. On Monday, January 20, 2020, at 12:00 noon at St. John's Missionary Baptist Church, 215 South Chicago, the youth-centered celebration, featuring guest speaker, Dr. Adrian Douglas, and musical entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have your signed proclamation.
And I have a copy for each one of the city commissioners and the other city employees.
Those drinks that will be provided are soft drinks.
Well, I thought that would be on the stew.
We will now proceed to the citizens forum, which is an opportunity for anyone to address the commission on any item that's not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. All right, we will move to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing on the Proposed 2020 Amended Budget for the City of Salina.
Just back.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Debbie Pack, the Director of Finance. During the publication, adoption, and certification process for the 2020 budget back in August of 2019, staff realized that the publication omitted expenditures for three funds, those funds being the Business Improvement District Fund, the Bicentennial TPEC Fund, and the Sanitation Fund. This omission was discovered after the public hearing and after the adoption, but prior to the certification to the county. So, staff immediately contacted the Kansas Department of Administration, who is the authority over municipal budgets, to find out how to address this issue. Upon their advice, we certified the budget that was published because that was what the public had seen and had opportunity to comment on. We also knew going into this that we would have to come back before commission in 2020 to do an amended budget for those three funds in order to allow them to have expenditures in 2020. We could not do the amendment at the time because the statute requires that an amendment for a budget be done in the year to which the budget applies. The notice for today's hearing was published on December 29th in the Salina Journal. The amendment includes the original expenditures that were presented to commission and were intended to be adopted back in August of 2019, which are $90,500 for the Business Improvement District Fund, $740,000 for the Bicentennial TPEC Fund, and $3,773,77,488 for the Sanitation Fund. Upon approval, the proposed budget amendment will authorize revisions to these three funds. There are two action items before you today. First is to hold the public hearing on the amended budget, and the second is to approve the amended budget, and staff has identified three options for you for consideration. First is to approve the amended budget, second is to approve the amended budget with changes as you deem appropriate, or third is to not approve the amended budget, which would hold staff to the original budget of $0 for these funds. Staff recommends option number one, and I would stand for any questions that you might have at this time. Or do you want to do public hearing first?
Just questions for you. This does not affect the balancing of the budget?
No.
At all?
No.
Okay. Now open a public hearing on the Proposed 2020 Amended Budget for the city of Salina. Any comments, questions, concerns? I don't see anyone even starting to stand up, so we will close the public hearing and bring this back to the commission.
Mayor, I move we approve the amended budget. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the amended budget for 2020. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Now move to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 6, 2020, and item 6.2, authorize the city manager to pay the annual invoice for dues and subscriptions to the League of Kansas Municipalities in the amount of $20,720.37.
Is there any item a commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing on, is there a motion to approve?
We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five, nothing. Administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 20-11023, establishing a moratorium on future building permits in the Grand Prairie Edition in the city of Salina, Kansas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, the city commission did discuss this moratorium. Since that time, we have received no comments from the public, so there are no comments included in your packet. Additionally, a mailing went out following the meeting on 1-6 to all property owners via identification through tax records within the Grand Prairie subdivision notifying them of the moratorium and of this meeting. Also, an outcome of that meeting was questions and direction from the city commission related to peer communities and what other communities in Kansas are doing with secondary emergency access roads and interpretation of subdivision codes in regards to fire and emergency access. I would like to now, well actually, I'm going to touch a little bit on those suggested commission actions, but there are several other people that would like to speak under this. The fire marshal is available to discuss his comments regarding the feedback he got from peer communities. The city manager is also available to speak on additional examples from the Wichita area and some of the conversations he's had with the developer of the property that I think could lend to this conversation. And lastly, the city's legal counsel, Mr. Greg Bankston, is here regarding the ordinance if there are any particular questions. When we last met, there was a bit of work on the floor trying to get the ordinance and the wording right, so I hope you've had a chance to look at that. One thing I will note under commission actions or recommended actions is of course, approve ordinance 20-11023 on second reading. Your second option is to amend the ordinance as you see appropriate. The third would be to postpone consideration of this. And the fourth option, staff would ask you to strike as there's been a mistake there. So, we've asked to remove item number four, and that would leave you with only three options, to approve, to amend, or to postpone. I, of course, am available for questions, but at this time, I would leave it to fellow staff to add to this issue. Mr. Mayor, possibly starting with Troy Long, Fire Marshal?
Please. May I wait till you get to the microphone? Okay? We can hear you, but no one else can.
Just for the general public, we have additional copies that are available for anyone that
Good afternoon. My name is Troy Long, Fire Marshal, city of Salina. What I've handed you today, last week in the commission meeting, we spoke about a lot of things that, not happening in Salina, but happening in other communities. I wanted to reach out to my profession and the other fire marshals across the state of Kansas. We have a listserv email. I sent out an email. I believe you guys received kind of a memorandum from me as to what other cities are doing. Didn't get a lot of response back like I had hoped, but some of the bigger cities, Overland Park, Lenexa, Wichita. And then, because Wichita's been brought kind of on the forefront here, I wanted to reach out to Stuart Bevis, who is the current Fire Marshal in Wichita and has been for, I believe, the last three or four years. And that's what I handed you today, is just some email correspondence back and forth with Mr. Bevis. And just, I did have a phone conversation with him today just to make sure that we had good communication, and I just basically asked him, I said, "Do you see mistakes that I'm making associated with this plat that has been before us?" And as you can see in his email exchange, basically this is saying he feels the same way. The biggest thing that I think needs to be remembered when we start comparing city to city is that, especially with things like this cul-de-sac turnarounds, dead-end turnarounds, those kind of things, they're pretty particular to the city. Wichita responds to a lot of fires with squads. A squad is basically a pickup with firefighting equipment on it, and they do have engines. We're very similar in that, but we don't have the squads that go out to fires. Other cities may have different sizes of trucks that respond to these types of things. And so, I just wanted to provide you with that information, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I did also have one other email that I forgot to include with that. It was an email, it was his initial response back to, and I forgot to give it to you, to my question that I put out on the listserv, and it was an example that they had where they had a developer develop a piece of property that he didn't own three of the edges, they were agricultural fields with over 200 lots within that. The city commission office, or the city manager's office did make the decision to go ahead and allow him to build up to 60 homes until he had a secondary connection. And just wanted to provide that for you. And like he said, the code, that section of the code, he describes it quite well in a very unprofessional term, squishy. It's out there, it is a little challenging when you look at all the things that apply with it. So, as I said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If I could add to that a little bit, I think it'll help foster this conversation, and Troy, if you'd be willing to distribute these as well. Mr. Long mentioned last week that there's an exception in the Wichita code as it relates to golf courses in particular, and we really didn't know a lot of those details when we were trying to sort that out. And in response to the listserv question that he put out, somewhere in that conversation, I became aware on Friday that they provided a page out of their design standards for Wichita. And that particular page was a little hard to interpret without some broader context in terms of the code section that came out of. So, what Mr. Long's handing out is that entire code section, and it kind of dovetails into this email exchange that took place today. So, I'll wait a second while he distributes those, and then I'll kind of walk you through this.
Would we have an opportunity to take a look at this since we're just receiving it right now?
Yeah, I'm going to walk you through it in detail.
Okay, and I'm depending, I may need a recess to take all this in.
Please be sure to give Dr. Hanky a copy.
We've got additional copies of this as well for anybody that'd like a copy. So, there's a lot of pages here, but it's really just, the reason being to start you at the beginning of their particular code section. So, page 71 is the design standards, general standards, and we really need to jump to page 717. All right, I'm sorry, 716. So, there's some language in their code, and it's highlighted there for you, section R. "In order to provide for the development of residential areas characterized by streets with reduced traffic speeds, volumes, and the absence of through-traffic, the platting of streets with a single point of ingress and egress, cul-de-sac, is permitted. Streets that are designed to have a single point of ingress and egress shall not be longer than 800 feet for urban subdivisions and 1,200 feet for suburban subdivisions." And then if you turn to page 717, that's actually the page that was forwarded to us just standalone without the additional context. But beginning at the top of page 717, there's language that indicates, "The platting of a street with a single point of ingress and egress may have a..." a street with a single point of ingress and egress may have a length that exceeds the design standard of 800 feet for urban subdivisions or 1,200 feet for suburban subdivisions, provided one of the following conditions exists. Condition number one is the configuration of the subdivider's ownership prevents the development of an alternate circulation system." So that's kind of the scenario that Mr. Long described, where the developer doesn't own enough ground to create a circulation connection. The second exception is the one that Mr. Long mentioned on Monday, and that is, "There exist man-made or natural topographical limitations, e.g., golf courses, lakes, and floodways that dictate a long cul-de-sac." So what we were trying to ascertain as going into this afternoon still was how Wichita administers that. And I've highlighted one other section there, and that is that, "Emergency access easements shall be dedicated to mitigate the concerns regarding emergency access that are created by cul-de-sac streets that exceed 800 feet in length in urban subdivisions or 1,200 feet in length in suburban subdivisions. A guarantee shall be submitted by the subdivider that assures the construction of an all-weather roadway surface with an emergency access easement along with all planned access points to adjacent public or private street systems. Subdivider shall also guarantee any required gating, fencing, or special signing necessitated by the plating of an emergency access easement." So, it appears to me, and Mr. Long may be able to elaborate more than I can, based on his conversations with representatives of Wichita, that they've codified this scenario in greater detail than we have, but they've contemplated the possibility of ownership limitations and/or golf courses in particular causing the need for a different application of an approach. Now, they have gone so far as to say that a guarantee shall be submitted. That's not something that we got in place, I've lost track of time, 12 years ago, or however long ago it was that we took this issue up. So, you know, that's a valid point. That is something that's been identified in the code commentary as a suggested approach. But I think, Troy, you might point out in the email exchange you had with Mr. Bevis that he's acknowledged that looking at our phasing, looking at our configuration and the access point, he's indicated that he finds that comparable to what they might do. I think the guarantee might be the aspect that we don't have in place compared to them. But this response does speak to possibly it being, I guess, acceptable to them to have that accounted for and provided as part of Phase Three. But admittedly, you had a conversation Monday that this temporary moratorium will be an opportunity to brainstorm a solution and a timeline and kind of solidify all that. So I think we can continue in that direction. Just wanted to give you a little bit of additional context of Wichita's approach, as we understand it.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, I don't want to interrupt the flow, but I'd like to ask this before I forget. What are our present subdivision regulations? And I don't know if that's a question from Mr. Haskins, or if you know, in terms of the maximum length of a cul-de-sac?
There is a provision, and I know I've seen it in our materials, but I just wanted
to confirm that.
So, what I do know is it relates to this one, there is an exception given to that maximum length out of recognition that this, we had a unique configuration.
But just in general, what do our subdivision regulations say?
I'd have to look it up.
I'm going to verify it right now. I just, I don't want to speak off the cuff, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And we can come back to that, I just wanted to make sure that...
So I don't know that we're suggesting that changes anything that you did last week. Just, you'd asked for a comparison of what peer communities do. We've referred to a listserv, and I apologize if you already are very familiar with a listserv, but it's a service where you can post an email or a question, it goes out to the entire group, and then they can, anyone can opt to respond, and that goes back to the entire group. So, it's pretty informal, you know, the level of detail and whether you get a response at all kind of depends on the question and the participation rate. But we did that last, as follow-up to your question about what other peer communities done, that's what we've been able to do so far in the intervening week. And I do have one other topic to cover as it relates to conversation with the developer, but I don't want to move past this topic unless you're ready.
I'll start. Commissioner Hay, Ryan. Commissioner Hodges.
Well, while we're waiting on that, I did have a couple of questions specifically for the Fire Department. And first of all, I appreciate the research that you've done on this, and I think that it's always good information to have in terms of what we consider our peer communities are doing in terms of best practices. We'd also talked last week about the subdivisions, the single ingress/egress subdivisions that we have here in Salina. Have you had a chance to do an inventory and an evaluation of the single access subdivisions that we have and confirm that the access roads, if there's been a provision for those, that they're in good working order?
Actually, if I could jump in there, I've tasked Development Services staff with that initial inventory, since it's more of a planning and a plating requirement question. So, I've seen a preliminary list, but some of those subdivisions have since developed out to where they have more than one entrance. And what I've asked them to focus on is single entrances as well as where approval was conditioned on provision of some emergency access. So, then I've let the Fire Department know, just as soon as we have that inventory, I'd like them to go out and inspect each to see if the road was installed and remains in place according to those conditions. So, all that work's been identified, staff's been tasked with that, but we haven't completed it yet.
Well, I think that I would ask Fire Department staff to go out and have another look at River Run, because I was out there on Saturday, and there's a tree growing in the middle.
Tree that's, it's off to the right?
Yeah.
A big Russian olive tree?
Well, I don't know what species of tree. I've got a picture on my phone, but looking at, and I saw one no parking sign that was kind of dented and knocked down. And I thought that that entrance looked pretty challenging. I mean, if I, you know, if I took my four-wheel-drive truck, absolutely. But between the tree and the slope, and it didn't look to me like the signage indicated that, obviously, there's quite a wide space that needs to be kept clear there. So, I do appreciate the fact that staff is working on getting an inventory, but perhaps in the meantime, we could take another look at that and make sure that it's accessible and it's usable.
Yeah, I haven't personally looked at River Run, but I know multiple staff have. As I understood it, it was initially installed as required, and looking at aerial photographs, you can see where the road was in place, the rock was in place. What I was advised is it was allowed to grow up in grass, and so the question becomes whether there's still a sufficient road bed there under the grass or...
And if it's identifiable to how you stay on the path as opposed to wandering off and getting stuck.
And I assume that's kind of a function of ongoing inspections and maintenance by the homeowners association.
Did we have an answer on the subdivision length?
Subdivision or road with a cul-de-sac, a dead-end cul-de-sac?
Yeah, I thought it was in our subdivision regulations.
Yes, so the maximum length of a cul-de-sac street shall be 600 feet in the right-of-way line of the commencing street along center line right-of-way. So 600 feet, and that's for a dead-end cul-de-sac.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you very much, I appreciate the confirmation on that. And just to refresh my memory, what's the length of the particular cul-de-sac that we're talking about here?
In part, I think it depends on where you measure from, but my understanding is Phase Three's about 1,000, or 900 feet, and I don't know the additional distance of Phase Two.
The water seep fire access road measures out at like 758 feet.
From, what is it?
From what?
Bent Grass Drive back?
Yeah, so from Markley to the end of Phase Three.
Right.
That easement piece.
Right.
Is like a little over 750.
And I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but what about the measurement from, and I think that, is that Connector Street, Bent Grass Drive? Am I saying that correctly? From Bent Grass Drive through Phase Two to the end of Phase Three?
I do not know those two segments off the top of my head, I grabbed them.
Okay, okay.
Or it might be more important for our discussion today, to the end of Phase Two.
Well, and, well, okay, and that's to me what it all boils down to. Is this initially a two-phase project or a three-phase project? And when we get to that, I would just like to address that really quick.
Just one more issue. Look at the response from Mr. Bevis. It brings back the same question I had asked last week. Is the, are the exceptions, granted the number of homes that are allowed and the distances, are these for the, are these truly safety precautions, or are these for the convenience of being able to turn the truck around? Because, yeah, see here, well, this is the rule, but if you don't have control of the property, or you can't do this, then we'll excuse it. Well, if it's being excused because of something that should have been foreseen and addressed ahead of time, then it's not really a safety issue. And, because that's what I think we're going to ultimately happen to face here.
Yeah, in my phone conversation with Mr. Bevis, the example he used, which addresses that perfectly, is so, a development they had down there, they had planned on streets tying in, but it was over 150 feet, but they knew that future development was going to tie in. Streets are named, because it's in the same development, streets are named very similar. So you have, he had Union Street and Union Boulevard. Well, dispatch, dispatch is out the wrong street. They go to Boulevard instead of Street, and now they get all the way down there to the end of that. Now they have to back that truck all the way back out of there because there's not a turnaround. So, I mean, that's a lot of it, and so when you start backing a big truck to get back out of there is when you run into issues. You don't want to be backing a fire apparatus back.
In the interest of full disclosure, and I can't put my fingers on it, but if you look at the Fire Code commentary, there is quite a bit of discussion about traffic, circulation, ability to turn around, but there is also discussion about an alternate point of access in the event that one entrance point is blocked. And so, I think there is a lot in the industry, there's a lot of conversation about, you know, the turnaround aspect of it, but there is also some consideration about an alternate point of access.
Speaking of the length of the road with a cul-de-sac, I know in this subdivision, they have numerous cutouts. Does that affect the length that we are allowed to have that street before we hit a cul-de-sac? Because we have the turnarounds within the street, how does that affect our length?
Yeah, I mentioned last week that I was speculating a little bit, that I felt that Fire Marshal Williams at the time took that into consideration. You don't typically see that design, and I think Mr. Bevis refers to it as something related to pregnancy. I forget what his terminology is, but he acknowledged as well that that factors into, you know, that combined with the intention to put the access in in Phase Three would be acceptable to him or Wichita. But I do think that was part of the original design intention.
Part of the intent for putting those in originally, is that correct?
And please don't misunderstand. I'm not advocating that we take a different course of action than you took last week, but, you know, there was a lot of conversation as if this was black and white, that Wichita was right and Salina was wrong. And as you asked, trying to get a sense of what our peer communities do, we tried to track that down a little bit. And I tried to make the point last week, and maybe I didn't communicate it very well, but the very first question in my mind, you know, at the outset, and as we've revisited this issue, was, was there sufficient discretion in the Fire Code to grant an exception? And I remain convinced, based on that exception number two, without a doubt, there was sufficient discretion to allow this exception. And, you know, the code language doesn't go into detail about financial securities and those type of things. Could be advisable, it is advisable, though that's more policy and implementation. But, you know, as we revisit this entire process a dozen years later, we can certainly find flaws, and we can certainly find a better way to do it. But we communicated an approval and an expectation, we tried to administer that going forward. And so I stressed last week, amending the code to be more stringent, be more clear, remove the exception going forward, that's pretty simple if we can reach consensus. Doubling back and applying it to a subdivision that's already been approved, financed, and under construction is a little bit harder. And I still, when the time's right, would like to share with you some of the additional work that's gone on in the last week.
I can just go back to Mr. Bevis's report one more time. On this January 13 response, the first paragraph, that since you are guaranteed the emergency access road at the end of Phase Three, it really meets the requirements of exception two. Again, if it's a safety issue, what's the timeframe? It could be 10 years before Phase Three is finished, which means for 10 years, you don't have that. Now, for 10 years, you could make a calculated guess that the few times you'll have to drive up there, you'll take a chance on backing the truck up. But from a firefighting, a fire safety issue, that's 10 years of, if it is beyond safety allowances, 10 years of substandard coverage. So that road, would you agree that it needs to be at the end or at the beginning of Phase Three?
And it's been my understanding, when I was brought on board to look at the replat of this going from 19 to 30 lots, it was my comment to say, we can't do, we won't be able to do any vertical construction in Phase Three until the remainder of Bent Grass Drive is completed and that emergency fire department access is in. Because we've kind of reached a point, that's 54 homes, I believe, is what is at that last cul-de-sac. And so, at some point, you've got to say, we need to have a secondary means egress in here.
And just to be clear, we are currently not guaranteed the emergency access road going in from a timeframe standpoint. We have the leverage to require it as part of Phase Three, but if Phase Three either is significantly delayed or doesn't happen, there's no additional financial guarantee or some type of time deadline.
Because the other issue is, the first, I don't know how many feet it is, Bent Grass Road is, I believe you refer to it as Boulevard, but it's two streets with a median down the center, basically.
And crossovers.
And crossover, so you could count that as two roads. I mean, functionally, I mean, the likelihood of an accident taking out both sides is probably low. But there comes the point where that becomes a single road. So, when you add Phase Three on to the end of that single road, now you're getting a much longer distance where it is a one-way in and one-way out thoroughfare. Even though the first part was Boulevard, the significant length of that is a single road.
Yes, sir.
And that's the reason I'm concerned that there needs to be some language that guarantees that second road if it goes any, even one house is built beyond that Phase Two.
And I believe we have, and I don't know what this, as it sets at 19 lots, but I know if they do the replat, we get the opportunity to weigh in on that as staff to say, this is what has to do if you're going to replat this. And I could be wrong, but I think I'm correct in that...
51 is Phase One and Two totally built.
Both the cul-de-sac that runs to the west, as well as the section of Bent Grass to the east, yes.
And so if that replat would come through where he would go from 19 to 30, we would have the levity or the ability to say, no, you can build this, but you're going to have to put in the remainder of Bent Grass Drive with the emergency access.
Even without the replat, even without Phase Three at all, isn't that the 51?
Yes.
So it wouldn't matter what happened with that replat?
Right. The total of Phase One and Phase Two is 51. But you've got that double entrance, and then shortly after you enter the subdivision, I don't know the number, but there's a cul-de-sac at the intersection off to the northwest. So if you kind of treat those as two cul-de-sacs, you don't have 51 on just one cul-de-sac. And with respect to the timing, Fire Marshal Long is correct. As part of the replating consideration, there's an opportunity to clarify the obligation. Additionally, the developers indicated a desire for special assessment financing. So, at the point that Phase Three goes forward, there'll be additional development agreement, there'll be additional approvals that'll be needed on our part, and I think there is a meeting of the minds with the developer that their intention all along was it would go in as part of the construction of, you know, water, sewer, street, storm for the phase, that that emergency access would be part of that construction. for the phase, that that emergency access would be part of that construction project and contract. So in that scenario, it'd all get constructed and be able to meet the Fire Marshal's expectation that no vertical construction, meaning no houses come out of the ground until that access point is in.
And that would, same process would follow whether it was replatted or kept in the original?
If it's replatted, we have more of an opportunity to make it a condition of the replat. If it's not replatted, the expectation's already been communicated, you know, at the outset and by way of the financing of the project, we have an opportunity to roll that into the development agreement and the plans for the project. But just to be clear, taking, saying that after Phase Two and rolling into Phase Three is not the direction that you provided last week, and that's not what's before you as an action item tonight. There's an ordinance drafted as you previously instructed.
All right. Please.
Just in terms of looking at this email from Mr. Bevis that stated on the 7th, I think it, I think one of his statements actually speaks to where we want to be and what best practices are. We honestly struggle on the best way to keep the number, number of houses below 30 until the secondary access road is ready. So what I read from that is, that's the goal, that's what we're working toward, that's acknowledged as best practice. Now, that may not be something that we achieve in every subdivision, but that's conformance with the IFC is, it appears that that's what Wichita is after, as well as I would hope Salina.
Yeah, I think that's fair. And, you know, the IFC articulates 30 as the standard, and then it articulates exceptions. And so to say that that's the goal, but we don't always meet the goal, there's an opportunity to, by way of exception, deviate from strict adherence to 30. Now, I would say we have an opportunity to be more formal than we were in this instance in terms of, under what circumstances do you get the benefit of the exception? How do we codify that? What do we do in the way of financial securities? You know, when you boil it all down, it typically ends up on what are the consequences? So more clear articulation of the consequences for non-compliance, there's an opportunity to improve our practices.
I think there's multiple reasons why there's variances to the code under Exception Two, depending on the entryway, depending on cutouts. It seems like we're kind of beating this horse to death. Seems like what we talked about last time, I think that's one of the reasons we talked about the 60-day moratorium is so we can get more information, we can have discussions with the developer to see how we can get to a resolution on this. And so I guess at this point, Mayor Davis, I'd really like to hear from the public if there's anyone that wants to speak, and then we can move forward on whether we want to go ahead and implement our 60-day moratorium that we're here to talk about.
And I don't want to drag it out. If I could throw one thing in, in the intervening week, staff met with the developer and his attorney and talked about some of the things you just mentioned in terms of options and timelines and what we might, trying to get something pulled together in 60 days with respect to possibly an alternate plan and a commitment to getting that second access point in, processing the replat so that he can make an informed decision about the status of his plat. And then ironically, we thought we had a great brainstorm idea and opportunity Friday morning, so we decided that staff would go out and actually in golf carts, go tour the golf course and look at some alignment. So we were out there when the ice storm hit about 12:30 and three golf carts looking at alternate configurations, all of which, I have to commend Mark Lidle in particular and Mike Hargreave. They were very creative in terms of understanding what we're trying to accomplish and looking at some options that were no more disruptive, possibly even less disruptive as you cross the golf course to get a point of access. Haven't really had a chance to work all that through with the developer, but the conversation has started, the brainstorming has started, the strategizing about what we do in the next 60 days has started. So we're trying to, you know, carry forward the direction you gave us last week. With that, I think the developer and his attorney are here and have some desire to address you as well, and that would be appropriate as part of that public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I also have feedback on that road length that you had asked about. Yes, so roughly Phase Two is a little over 900 feet in length and Phase Three is a little over 870-ish feet in length.
So something around 1700 to 1800 in total length between the two? Okay.
You don't happen to know how many feet it is past where it goes from the Boulevard to the single, do you?
I don't, but I can.
Or is it about one-third of the distance?
Between mapping tools and plat documents, so.
Or just eyeballing, does it look like it's about one-third or one-fourth of the distance up?
So we're looking at the distance from the Boulevard?
To a sing, where it becomes a single road without a median?
Okay.
To the end of Phase Two. But we'll let her work without the pressure of people looking at her getting that information. But the, please, the developer and/or his attorney?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Mike Montoya, I'm appearing on behalf of Cornerstone Development and Mr. Shepherd. I've had a chance to kind of review the prior hearing that you had, and I kind of wanted to address the moratorium issue that you've raised. One of the issues that's of importance to the City Commission is safety. And Mr. Shepherd is well aware of your concerns with regard to safety. I know the access road is very important. I think it's important also to look back at kind of how this started, and I think the fire chief and Fire Marshal has done a good job explaining the exception that was granted back in 2008 when this began and how this was addressed and how it was going to be addressed from a Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three standpoint. I think Mayor Davis has raised some good questions with regard to Phase Three and what exactly is going to occur with respect to the access road. It was never the intention to have any construction with regard to homes in that area without the access road. We did have an opportunity after the commission indicated to get with the city and try to develop a plan, address these issues, and see if we could come up with something that would work for all parties. And we did that on Friday. We met with city staff and with council and tried to look at the issues that the city had concerns about, trying to look at the access road and trying to determine the timing of that road, the construction type. Commissioner Hodges had raised in the prior meeting issues with respect to exactly what that road would be constructed of, looking at those type of issues, what the layout would be for that road, and trying to come up with some ideas and working with city staff on the golf course to see what would be the best way to do that. And I think we made some good headway on that, and I think we've kind of all come to an understanding of what the commission would like to see as far as a road, a location, and maybe when that's going to be done, which is very important. It is intended that when we come back to you, it'll be a collaborative effort between the city and the developer. And we'd like to present with you a plan that kind of outlines when that access road is going to be put in. Mr. Shepherd is ready to develop as quickly as we can get the replat moving through and find out where we're going to be on that. This is not going to be a 10-year process. The intent would be that we would start this process this year. The intent would be that we would have a developer's agreement that would set out how it would be constructed, where and what would be acceptable to the city. So this isn't going to be something that's going to be put off into the future. The intent was to begin construction as quickly as we could. We've got substantial interest or did have substantial interest in Phase Three, and we'd like to proceed with that. And so our intent is to move this along as quickly as possible. And we are going to continue to work with the city, try to come back to you with a plan that we think is going to work in that regard. The other part of this picture, however, deals with the financial effect that this has on Mr. Shepherd and his company. We recognize the safety issues. We also think it's important that city staff has addressed those issues in the past. They've been before you on numerous times with respect to this issue in the last couple or three weeks. And they've expressed to you that they feel that the exception has taken into consideration this particular development. Mr. Bevis has set out in the email the reference to 30 lots and why he thought that maybe that would be something that would be important. I think the difference, however, is the construction that's gone on in this particular case. You have the Boulevard interest and you have the cutouts. And I think Mr. Hopick addressed that, the Fire Marshal has addressed that and why that's different in this location. It really isn't just one simple entrance that's there. And I think the ability to get fire protection in there with respect to Phase One and Phase Two is there now. And I think the city personnel has addressed that, and I think they also would stand by the fact that it is there now. So obviously, we're asking that the moratorium not come into play. Now, recognizing that that may not be something that's palatable to the entire City Commission, the other issue that Mr. Shepherd would like to explore would be to ask the City Commission to amend the proposed ordinance and to provide for the issuance of up to 35 building permits. Phase One and Phase Two currently allow for 51 building permits. There are currently 29 building permits, 29 occupants or residences that are being constructed at this point. By allowing it to be up to 35 building permits issued, that would allow Mr. Shepherd and his company to continue to sell lots and to at least have six more to work on so that he is able to keep his employees busy. I mean, that's what his company is built upon, is providing work for the employees to do. He had every intention of doing that until this moratorium was mentioned, and now he's in a position to where he's unable to, or would be unable to, continue to retain all those employees simply because the work isn't going to be there. He's already lost three sales just as a result of the threat of the moratorium and the fact that the individuals don't know whether or not they would be able to build at this particular time. So it is a significant financial hardship that he would be experiencing. In order to mitigate that, it would seem to make sense as a compromise if the city would allow the issuance of up to 35 building permits. That's still substantially less than the 51 that would be allowed in Phase One and Phase Two. I believe that the roads in place today would certainly accommodate the 35 lots if the commission would be inclined to do that. I think the Fire Marshal and the Fire Chief could address that with respect to any fire concerns that would be there. That would also then give us time to continue to work with city staff and council to put together what our proposal would be on the timing of the access road so that we can move forward. Concurrently with that, our intention is to move forward with the replat with the understanding that the access road would be developed as part of that replat and that we would have a developer's agreement setting forth all the conditions related to that road. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Mr. Shepherd is also here. If you have any specific questions with respect to the development.
I don't know if my questions are best addressed to Mr. Shepherd or to council, so I think I'll hold on to my questions for the moment.
I just have one while you're here, but I'll, go ahead, Commissioner.
And I don't know where this question needs to go either, but you know, it's just like last week, we talked about the number one priority of this whole thing was safety. Does, do we feel that that access road is best placed through the golf course? And if it is placed in the golf course, how is that road going to be maintained during, like I said, three weeks ago, we had an eight-inch snowstorm? And there's no way you can tell me that a fire department is going to tell you where that road's at if the golf course is covered with snow. So that, to me, that emergency access road is useless during that time unless it's maintained all the time to where we know how to get in and get out of that place. So if we're going to spend the money on an access road up there, is it well-placed in the middle of a golf course?
I would respond to that in a couple of ways. Number one, we have other examples of access roads, not through the golf course, but in other instances that are not regularly trafficked. And so I think the whole issue of maintenance during snow in particular is something that is not a new, while it could have been a consideration previously, I don't know that it was sufficiently taken into account in the past. We've identified that this is a challenging piece of property in terms of its configuration. We've consented to the two peninsulas going into the golf course. We've looked at some alignments, and so while it may not be, it may be less practical than something that's more straightforward, I think there is a way to configure the access road to denote the boundaries of that access road so that that's, you know, visible during snow or during good weather. And we need to revisit our, you know, ongoing inspection of not just that one, but all the other access roads in the community. And we need to revisit our ongoing maintenance in terms of snow plowing. But by way of either landscaping along the edges of the fairway or something more prominent in the way of bollards, it's very possible to provide enough delineation for snow plows and fire to know the route of the road, then it becomes a question of staying on top of it in terms of snow removal.
Just following up on a question, or on Mr. Commissioner Hayes's question, I would agree that the road going through the golf course seems, I'm not a golfer, but it would seem to me to be extremely problematic. Have we contemplated, I noticed one of the communities that was surveyed, once they get above 30, they require fire residential sprinkler systems in houses over 30. I mean, should we possibly, as long as you're looking at different approaches, is that something that we could consider? Because then you've got, we've taken care of the access road point and we've also taken care of public safety.
Sure. The, at the time that the residential fire sprinkler requirements came out in the fire code, the Kansas Legislature proactively prohibited the requiring of residential fire sprinkler systems, and so.
How does Lenexa get around it then?
Well, it might take a little bit more interpretation. And, you know, I think the intent was prohibiting just kind of a blanket requirement. It may, you might be able to interpret it that it's optional on the part of the developer, it's not a, you know, community-wide requirement. But to answer your question, we would need further legal review. And that's probably an example of where Salina is more mindful of strict adherence to the law and state statutes than other communities might be. I don't know. We'd have to look into that further.
Thank you. Just one last question. Your comments suggested tying the planning for the fire access road to the replat. Is there a Plan B if the, if Phase Three is not replatted? As far as the access road is concerned?
Yeah, I think it's tied to the development of Phase Three and what happens at the replat. But at the same time, if there's an issue with the replat, it still just becomes a matter of trying to work out the financing of the access road in the developer's agreement that we're working with the city right now.
Because we're, obviously, we're not discussing the replat as our business today and just, you know, wanted it to be tied only to that one issue.
With respect to financing, the concern was raised last week about bond counsel recently identifying a concern on their part whether it was eligible for special assessment financing. We've since had a conversation and it's their opinion that it's eligible for community improvement district financing. So a similar mechanism creates an ability to create the district and impose the assessments on the properties in Phase Three. So we've kind of identified an alternative way to finance that improvement that keeps this whole conversation moving forward.
One of the options before us is to delay the moratorium. How much time would it take to work these issues out? Staff?
Yeah, I think 60 days is probably, you know, as much as government gets a bad rap of moving slow, we've got to, we've got to get notice out, we've got to get it before the planning commission, we've got to get, you know, the alternatives identified, designs pulled together, cost estimates pulled together, financing and a development agreement pulled together. So when we met last, we felt like we needed to be very strategic about the planning commission dates just to stay on the 60-day timeline.
I have one, I have, I'm sorry, if I can reconsider. Either from Mr. Shepherd or Mr. Montoya, I just want to confirm that from 2008, which is the original documents that we have to take a look at, from 2008, this was always planned to be a three-phase development?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know that you could say it was a one, two, or a three-phase development. I mean, I think things change all the time as economics change. I mean, it's, I don't know that that's relevant. I mean, prevalent, it's always been a development, and I think at one time it was a single-phase development, but never has that ever been moved forward, so.
Okay, so you don't see the relevancy of putting in the, putting in the access road after the first 34 houses are developed versus after the first 51?
Every time I've done a phase, it's been approved by the city and we've worked that out.
Okay. But the, and the initial approval was for the three phases, or you can't speak to that?
I can't speak to that. I can't answer.
Okay.
I can't answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as a follow-up to your question regarding from where the boulevarded road ends currently on Bent Grass Drive, what is that length leading to what would be the future end of the subdivision, which is the end of Phase Three, correct?
Yes.
That roughly calculates out to 1,871 feet. It's very similar to what you were asking, Commissioner Hodges.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we'll open this up for public comment during this part of the, the rules, a little different, public comment during, just consideration of the issue is generally limited to three minutes. We won't cut you off at three minutes if you're getting ready to finish your sentence, but try to be mindful of the, of the time.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Admiral Perney, former City Commissioner three times, former Planning Commissioner two times. I live at 101 Overhill. I have absolutely no financial interest in this project whatsoever. What I am interested in is having a development system that is reasonable, efficient, and consistent. And it is the things in this project that have really bugged me is that it's like, everybody forgot about the first, the approval of the final plat. It's my understanding that the final plat that was approved on May 4th, 2009, is still the final plat. It has never been amended. Is that correct? And if it has never been amended, on that day, in those minutes, it was approved subject to several conditions. One of the conditions, which everybody in this room, everybody in that subdivision ought to be concerned about, one of the conditions was that there would be no occupancy permits on any of the houses until the secondary emergency road was in. So we've got fifty-one houses up there that have invalid occupancy permits, and people are living in them, and millions of dollars has been spent to build them. The power of positive procrastination is one of the things I sometimes believe in. The trouble with positive procrastination, which it appears has happened repeatedly in this project, is that sometimes it comes back to bite you. Sometimes, if you, and with power of positive procrastination, you end up not having to do what you've put off at all because it was a bad idea in the first place. Lots of times, I think that's what has happened in this project. There, when you read the documents, the developer and the city are the applicants for the final plat. The city is a co-applicant for the final plat. The city is as responsible for procrastinating on this thing and dropping the ball on it as the developer is. The city's Park Department, the city manager, the fire department have all changed heads since that time, all changed leadership. The Development Department has changed. I don't really know what happened, and it's very unclear in the three-hundred-and-some pages in this packet, which I've attempted to read. But I know that in pages 164 through about 175, there's a detailed discussion of the preliminary plat where everyone is in agreement to a sec, an emergency road that goes across the golf course. It's engineered out in the preliminary plat with slopes and gradients, the cross-section of the road, all that, all the stuff necessary to build or rebuild that road because it followed apparently a path that had been in existence, that had been used by the Park Department for maintenance of the golf course. In the minutes of the, of the meeting where the final plat is approved, besides the condition that there's no building, building occupancy permits until that road is in, there's a provision that says all the off-site easements and right-of-way are approved and should be followed through upon. And I, apparently, they never were. Apparently, that roadway was never dedicated to the project. It shows on the plat, but it's not dedicated, apparently. I don't really know because it's, it's really hard to find a full, a clear copy of the final plat. But what's in the packet on 175 shows it, page 175. So it is, it's appalling that this whole thing has been taken over by tons of issues. The first issue is, do you even need a secondary access? We have examples all over town, including River Run, where there's a single-point access that if a semi-truck or something fell over across it, you couldn't get in. Including on the River Run, alleged second access is to go back into the Elks Club Golf Course, which that's not the right name anymore, but, and you still have to go through the single point of the little roundabout and the several hundred feet of Merrymount Road. That is the only access in the River Run and all its dead ends. It's every bit as bad as what is being proposed here. It's worse in some ways because Bent Grass is thirty-three feet wide at the minimum, the right-of-way is sixty feet wide, a fire truck with its big mirrors sticking out there is what, eleven feet wide? The truck itself is eight and a half. If they can't drive down a sixty-foot public right-of-way that is fairly wide open, then the secondary access isn't going to be any better, any improvement. I mean, it makes no sense, and it doesn't matter that the road is eighteen-hundred feet long, nineteen-hundred feet long, eighteen-seventy-one, point-six or some damn thing. It's nineteen-hundred feet long. Anyway, so I think that there's two options that could speed this thing along a lot. Number one is, you could either go back and instruct staff and the developer to immediately proceed with the construction of the emergency road, which is not really the best choice, but as it's set out in the plat documents from nineteen, from 2000, odd eight, not nine, 2008 and nine, in the final plat, you could just do that. The other thing you could do is you could just void that and say, hey, it's not that kind of a safety issue. This is an unusual plat. This is, as I just explained, there's plenty of access on the road and right-of-way that's already in the plat, just proceed. That leaves you stuck with the issue of, is Phase Three going to be the same number of units as in the odd nine plat, or is it going to be more units? But that's a separate issue, and it may, the number of thirty units on a dead end is, is just an arbitrary and capricious number. Nobody can back it up. It depends on the situation. If you have great access on that dead end, then you don't need a second access. The only thing that can block both, can block the one road that I can think of is the Blizzard of 1982. Are we ever going to have that again? Anybody remember that? We had five-foot drifts all over town, especially in the suburban, more open subdivisions such as Grand Prairie. And if you have that, it's going to block both roads. Doesn't matter. The risk is slim. There's places on the hill, close to this project, that now have over seventy units where you have to go through one intersection, and it's almost a half-mile to a major street. The one I'm thinking of most is Fairdale Road and the cross-street, I think it's called, something like Country Club Plaza Drive or something, but then it goes back to Golf View, and there's a whole bunch of condos in there with a twenty-foot wide street, a whole bunch, it's about thirty-eight units, I think. And that's the one-way in. There's one intersection that if that intersection is blocked, you can't get in there with big equipment, and there is no secondary access. So at any rate, I say, I'm suggesting that you abandon the moratorium and that you take one of those two actions. You either go back and build the road as it is shown in the plats, or you eliminate the need for such, the requirement for a road whatsoever by taking the waiver of the code.
Thank you, sir.
If I could clarify one point, and not in disagreement with Mr. Perney at all, but the prior staff report that Ms. Driscoll provided a week ago on the sixth acknowledged the requirement that you talked about in terms of no occupancy permits being issued until the emergency access road was in. But part of the point of that, that staff presentation was, that was a condition on the preliminary plat that then went away on the final plat. And so part of the conversation we had was intentional or unintentional, we seemed to transition from that being the expectation of preliminary plat to not carrying that condition forward as far as the final plat. I wish the paper trail was clearer at this point in terms of whether that was the point that the conversation transitioned from one phase to three phases. And I think I mentioned last week that even that language was a little bit conflicting in terms of it talked about development of the North Peninsula area, as that stood alone in some way, and then it shall be, construction of the emergency access shall be completed prior to issuance of any certificate of occupancy. So not, not arguing the point necessarily, just as a clarification, our interpretation was that language was on the preliminary plat, but it didn't get carried through to the final plat.
Thank you.
And if, if we could acknowledge that former Commissioner Perney received substantially longer than three minutes, it's probably, that's okay. I just, I just want, I think it's, if fair is fair, I think that we should extend that same courtesy to any other speakers who want to speak. I think that, I didn't start timing exactly, but I think that Mr. Perney had at least eight minutes.
Yeah. Yep. Thanks.
Dr. Justin Hanke, this will surprise you, but I'm actually going to try and keep it short. It'll be under five minutes. Good afternoon. So looking through everything, I don't feel that we can find a solution unless we know the cause of the problem. I stated last meeting, there had been too many errors. It doesn't add up in terms of information provided by staff. Mr. Longfelt, Fire Marshal Roger Williams reviewed the plat to completion of Bent Grass Drive to develop his decisions. When I approached the project from that standpoint, things became clear. Also, the additional information sent to me from my open records request helped, and I emailed that to all the Commissioners. Given the memorandums, I'm concerned that the fire department is willing to provide an explanation to help city staff explain problems for two reasons. One is that Dean Andrew, who has been recused from this project, found a document that no one else could find with the Fire Code scribbled in the corner with Appendix D, Section 107.1, Exception Two, leaving it at Fire Marshal discretion when an emergency access road would be built despite the City Commission approval requiring it up front before any occupancy permits were permitted, just as this gentleman just stated, in the entire subdivision. In regards to Dean finding a document not included in any information from any Planning Commission or City Commission since 2008, when asked, Mr. Screg said Dean came up with it. I'm not sure. He maintains quite a bit of files. I honestly don't know. With that document, Roger Williams was called by Mr. Binkston, the city attorney, and provided a sworn affidavit stating that he participated in the January 16th, 2008 Design Review Team Meeting in honor before February 21st, 2008. He sent the attached email to Dean Andrew with no mention of the Fire Code, exception in the email. However, in conjunction, meaning at the same time, he personally made note on the plan stating the Fire Code, Exception Two. The document from Dean is dated February 2009, which is almost a year later than the affidavit states, which is concerning. To clarify, if that notation was on an original document or a blueprint, it would have been forwarded onto other documents, and one of the diagrams I sent you guys had a similar date in 2009, and it's not on there. It's concerning that this may be potentially a false document when I look at those dates and the discretion between the two of them. And then it's concerning that the affidavit could potentially have errors to it as well, and that it was, you know, from Roger Williams nearly twelve years after the fact. The second reason I have those concerns is the concept of Exception Two being applied to this scenario that we're in seems to be a rebuttal to me finding out the road was not built. Dean Andrew knows these codes very well. He discusses them at every development that occurs in Salina. If this was the case, he would have presented it back to me on October 15th when I displayed the road was not in place. All the documents I have reviewed show that Roger Williams evaluated this plat to completion, just as Mr. Long said, when you look at it to completion, with it being presented as two phases. Mr. Shepherd, the developer, stated clearly on August 22nd, 2016, City Commission meeting regarding Phase Two Special Assessments, this was originally designed with two phases total. That was his statement. Thirty-four homes in Phase One, with the access road being built up front as approved, thus when homes were approaching thirty, or thirty-four at most, Phase Two in Bent Grass Drive was to be completed to the end of the project, which would have connected it to an access road already in place. This design was actually very eloquent in terms of timing from Roger Williams and explains why the access road was to be built up front and why Appendix D, Exception Two, is not written on any documents anyone in this entire project has seen except for the one found by Dean Andrew with inconsistent dates on it. And there is no documentation regarding Exception Two being applied to Phase One and Two during Special Assessments in 2016, as stated in the affidavit, numbers eight and nine. I've reviewed nearly every document available with this development, and I've never seen approval to split Phase Two into three phases. I've really scoured to find that approval from City Commissioner or Planning Commission. I think this is where all the errors and misstatements root from, is this concept of Phase Two being split. I hope the City Commission is concerned with these findings and doesn't move forward acting on the memor, or moratorium until we have further details, possibly an open meeting with Dean Andrew, city staff, and fire officials with open questions because these inconsistencies are concerning. And as I said, I'd surprise you, that's all I have. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is John Blanchard. I live at 250 South Ninth Street. I want to show you guys something right here. This is the open records request that Dr. Hanke had requested initially. Sometime after the process, I'm not quite sure what the date is, he asked me if I'd take these documents and look through them and help him see if I could find something that maybe he was missing on, on the phasing plans. I looked through them. I spent several hours scouring through these. I found nothing that would support ever a Phase Three. I too went back and listened to the meeting from August 22nd, 2016, and Commissioner Hoppeck, you had asked me about that at the last meeting. Did you also have an opportunity to look at that?
I have not.
You didn't? Okay. Well, I think Mr. Shepherd admitted today that that was kind of the plan. In addition to saying that it was always going to be only two phases, he also added that he had decided to divide Phase Two into two phases. Okay, so he had decided to. I don't know if staff was involved in that. Nothing was part of the open records request. I couldn't find anything. But one of the things that I think is worth noting is that, and I find it a little problematic that it took Dr. Hanke's threat of filing a complaint with the Attorney General about a violation of the Cora for city staff to the next week finally find a couple of more documents. And they were actually documents that I was looking for, and I think he was looking for initially. Two of those documents clearly state on them that there is a Phase One and a Phase Two. There is not a Phase Three on anything, none of it. And those two documents that he had to make a threat of a complaint to the Attorney General to receive, okay? Those documents were dated, and I believe that, I don't know if any of you saw that, he said that he emailed those to you. He emailed them to me, and I found that they had a date stamp on them of something like October 21st, 2009, which was just prior to the issuance and the advisability of the original special assessment benefit package. So I don't know, in the extensive research that was done by staff, we see everything with Phase Three, we see no documentation of Phase Three. Yet in the documents that were uncovered last minute, they're there. And I hope that you all got to read the email that he sent because they're, it's clearly stamped on there, and that, that is not only a huge red flag, but I think when Dr. Hanke comes before and states that there have been mistruths, I'll put it that way, and he calls them out, and then he gets chastised for the way he talked about that, I think we owe him... he gets chastised for the way he talked about that, I think we owe him a thank you for finding that and not consternation for pointing it out. We need to not draw moral equivalence to someone that states a mistruth and someone that points it out. Okay? They're not equal. One other question I asked last time is, do we have documentation of any other subdivision where we've taken this exception on? And I did research, and I found 23 instances of either additions, PDDs, unplatted properties, or mobile home parks that have a single way in and out and no emergency access. And so, I did a little research on my own on that. I think, you know, I don't blame Dr. Hanke for threatening to contact the Attorney General, mainly because of the response in the letter that he got, the latest response. And it said that we originally withheld documents because of a legal exception. Well, that's not really the way the law works. The law works in that if you, at that time, within the three-day period, choose to withhold documents for a legal reason, that that needs to be presented to the person asking for the records. So, we need to do better on that, because we've made so many mistakes in the past on open records. And I think right now, you're at the mercy of Dr. Hanke's good graces to not report that. So, one last thing I'd like to talk about, and it has to do with customer service and knowing who our customer is, and something that kind of goes along with that, is that we can no more waive the law of gravity or any of those other things. You know, there are certain things that we really shouldn't be in the business of waiving. Yes, on some of the variances that have to do with public safety, I think we do have discretion, and we trust those people that we give that authority to, to exercise that discretion in a good way. You're the five people in this community that hold people accountable, and you're the ones that set policy. I think we need to start saying, we need a policy, much like Wichita has, on when we do this and how we exercise that discretion. And that those decisions need to be done in a more transparent way, instead of just on the administrative level sometimes, especially when we have these types of circumstances. I really applaud Dr. Hanke, and I can't remember the lady's name that was here before, but she is also a resident that was here last week. And in particular, I thought that Don Went really held himself extremely well before this board. I think he was trying to get a point across to all of you, and I don't think you were really hearing him. When he said that you need to hold yourself, you know, you hold citizens to a standard that you don't hold yourselves to, I think what he was getting at was, you're the governing body. You're the city. You have the authority to either grant or deny exceptions. You need to be held to a higher standard. And so, I think that's what Don was getting at, because if I come, or Don came to you to ask for a variance, as the city manager pointed out, and the code, the code is replete with exceptions. But as a citizen and a homeowner, or builder, or anyone, if I want an exception, I have to jump through hoops. I have to justify it. I have to provide a paper trail. I have to document that, and I have to prove that I have a hardship. And with the city, we just say, well, we did it. We don't have a paper trail. We don't have justification. We don't have anything. We need to hold ourselves to a higher standard than that. And the last thing I'll say is that, and this relates to sort of ongoing thing, and being really having the ability and the desire to hold ourselves accountable. When we went through the whole animal shelter issue, back, the cruelty to animal issue, Commissioner Hoppeck, you, I think, were very correct in saying, when we were calling for an independent investigation, you said, well, let's wait for the dust to settle, and then we'll do that. Well, we never did that, and so, we were never able to learn lessons from that. And that is that when we do something, or somebody does something, we need to own it right away. And so, I'd just like to share with you the law, the five laws of holes, because I think it's helpful and it paints a good picture. The first law of holes is, if you find yourself in a hole, stop digging. The second law of holes is that if you find yourself in a hole, stop digging, but then climb out of the hole, and then fill the hole, so you don't leave a hazard there for others. The third law of holes is if you don't know what, if you don't know that you're in a hole, ask someone who is not all covered with mud. Now, they're generally the ones sitting in an easy chair somewhere, watching the whole thing. But ask someone. Seek help. Fourth law of holes is, if someone else, and especially when that someone appears smart and has been successful in the recent past, seems to be digging a hole, don't try to jump in and give him company. And then, the fifth law of holes is, trust your logic, and trust your logic more than your ego. And so, you're the decision makers up here. Once again, as I did in the animal services thing, there are a lot of inconsistencies in this process. And in order to make sure we don't do this again, I would ask that you appoint an independent investigator to find out when and where this started, and how we can do better in the future. Thank you very much.
Mr. Scragg, would you respond to the one comment made by Mr. Blanchard as far as the verbiage of why some documents were not sent to?
Sure. What it was referring to is the DRT notes, and notes, memoranda, and preliminary policy decisions are subject to, and can be withheld under the Open Records Act. And that's been our past practice, kind of across the board, in part, because, you know, individual prospects, you know, pick whatever commercial entity you want, really don't have an expectation that their competitors or others can't make open records requests of their projects. And the discussion that transpired last week kind of caused us to revisit the application of the Open Records Act, both in terms of, would it be beneficial to disclose that, and was it discussed, frankly, publicly enough that it waived the exception? And so, what we were trying to explain in the letter was, and we previously withheld it based on that exception. And we can go into greater detail as it relates to application of the Open Records Act, but my understanding is, providing an explanation of what was withheld and why is required in response to an inquiry, it's not necessarily required proactively as part of the initial communication. The other thing that I would tell you is, we are looking at kind of our open records response process, and I would characterize it that, you know, we receive open records requests that are pretty straightforward. They identify a record. We all know what that record is. We can go find it, and we can produce it. Then, we receive open records requests that are understandably more open-ended, all communication related to X. And this particular, and the general expectation of the Kansas Open Records Act is that we provide a response in 72 hours, three business days. And so, this request was received on the 30th of December with January 1 intervening. So, it created a deadline of the Friday before your city commission meeting last week. It was actually five requests with 22 sub-points, and it was very much all correspondence related to. And I don't know that most respondents kind of realize what that means in terms of our response. And staff, admittedly, their first reaction is to try to fulfill that request within that three days. The Open Records Act does provide that we can respond in three days, that it's going to take additional time, it's going to take considerable resources, and we can estimate a cost to respond. In this particular case, we, I returned from vacation on the 2nd of January. We had a conversation on that Friday, the day of the deadline, and we felt like we were kind of in the horns of a dilemma. Recognizing the desire to have the information in advance of your consideration on Monday, I'd made the decision to go ahead and provide what we can, rather than respond that we need additional time, thinking that that would be even more offensive and frustrating to what Mr. Hanke was trying to accomplish. So, we scrambled through a two-hour meeting of reviewing each one of those 22 requests, reviewing what staff had done to track those down, and reviewing our response to each one of those. The other item that we provided in response, in this past week, is, we provided an email, but, and I didn't personally review it, but apparently, we failed to provide the attachments that were referenced in the email. There's other examples where we provided the emails and the attachments. I can't speak to how those attachments got omitted, but, you know, if there was an intention not to disclose, we wouldn't have included the email, let alone the attachments. And so, Mr. Hanke's comment at the podium last week was pretty open-ended. I tasked the deputy city manager with going back through that entire response and finding the email that was missing in attachment. Didn't ask Mr. Hanke to clarify. Tasked staff was doing that. We tracked it down, and we provided it to him. So, going forward, my intention with the help of legal counsel and other staff that are involved, is to be more clear in terms of, before we just run headlong, or before we commit to someone that submits an open records request, that you'll have your answer in 72 hours, we really need to stop and think about how many people that involves. In this particular case, I haven't counted it up, but I think it exceeds a dozen. And what it then meant is, we had to take key words and search all of our emails and then review them. I personally reviewed about 1,000. And so, we, my preferred response would be to provide some explanation of that dichotomy between, you've asked for a record, it's clear what the record is, we're happy to provide it, versus, you've made a request that involves extensive amount of staff and extensive amount of staff time, and we'd just like to confirm, here's what's going to be involved, here's the expense associated with it, it's going to take more than 72 hours, and confirm that that's how you'd like to proceed. In this particular case, again, I got involved at the end of the process, and there was a question of whether we should pass through the cost. I didn't feel like we had adequately estimated the cost and provided that cost estimate to Mr. Hanke, so somewhat to the frustration of staff, I waived the fee, because I didn't feel like we had deliberately assessed the process, the amount of effort, the bill that would go with it, communicated that with Mr. Hanke in advance, had him confirm that's how he wanted to proceed. In the interest of trying to be responsive to your, the timeline that was imposed by your consideration on the 6th, we tried to expedite the best we could.
Thank you.
May I follow up on that? I don't know if you had other questions that you wanted to go with, but I just had a quick question on, in terms of the open records request. So, how is Dr. Hanke supposed to know what he can't know in terms of documents? I mean, I seem to recall that when Mr. Blanchard had some open records requests that were related to correspondence with the Chamber of Commerce, that we provided those documents, and they were redacted. I guess my question to you is, is it best practice not to acknowledge a document's existence? Or would it be best practice to supply the document redacted and give the reason for the redactions?
Well, in all honesty, if I had it to do over again, I think the best practice in this particular instance would not, would have been not to respond in 72 hours and regroup, and be more deliberate in terms of staff review and legal review of the response. We, in the effort of trying to expedite it, we tasked staff over a holiday, individually go figure it out, share that information by Friday. We had a clerical staff person trying to compile that. I tried to intervene and at least get a set of eyes on it before it went out the door, and it was an overwhelming response. So, part of what we, my intention is, is to provide, we've already provided some direction in this regard, but formalize even further these steps. And I've asked our continuous process improvement director to help do process documentation so that we can make it abundantly clear, because across 500 employees in the organization, any one of them can receive an open records request and is tasked with responding to it, or at least communicating it. So, we have to be even more abundantly clear than we've ever been in this organization as to process.
I would agree with that, and I think it's also helpful to probably get with the requister and confirm, you know, what exactly, what exactly that they're trying to find. But I do come back to the question. So, in the future, I make an open records request, and it's about, you know, it's about project notes. It's about something that's a protected class under Kansas statute. Will it be disclosed that that document exists, or is that just a non-response on the request?
I don't know how to answer that question for two reasons. Number one, I'm going to take legal review that I've yet to have and get that answer back. And then, secondly, I don't know that I can provide you a blanket answer across all types of documents, across all types of communication. Even if we say our intention is to disclose, and I don't have a hypothetical for you, but there may be an instance where we may get legal advice not to disclose in the particular instance.
Could I suggest, unless there's a question germane to the issue we have to discuss today, that we push that issue for a future study session or a presentation?
Yeah, I think that'd be appropriate, and, you know, as we develop that process, I'd be more than happy to report back to you the process documentation we created and the new approach that we've tried to build to continually improve.
Is there anyone else who wants to come? Well, one time, just so we can, anyone else? No, well, I was saying, unless the other commissioners...
It appears we're going down a lot of different roads. We're looking at items that stem back to 2008 and 2009 that have been thrown in our lap, and I don't, we're still discussing the same things we were. I still believe that we need the 60-day moratorium so that we can iron out some of these things, because we have individuals saying that this was not platted as 1, 2, and 3. When was the access road to go in? Do we feel like this subdivision is safe with the current road configuration it has? So, at this point, I'm going to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 20-11023 on second reading.
Second.
Just a second. Too many papers. All right.
Mayor, if I may, now that we have the motion before you, I would appreciate the opportunity to speak with you in executive session. I would think 10 minutes would take care of us.
All right. 10 minutes. Is there, I don't know all the flowery verbiage by memory.
Right. Given the amount of public discussion that this has generated, I am not comfortable going into executive session at this point, so I will hand that off for somebody else.
That's in the agenda. Okay. Thank you.
Well, it's always an option. If I may, Mayor, the city manager has suggested the possibility of an executive session to discuss whether you wish to go into executive session, that we have precedent for that. I can assure you that my advice to you has not been discussed publicly. And once I provide that, however you all wish to handle it, is at your discretion, not mine. That's the dilemma I'm in. I cannot dictate for you what you disclose or not, or presume that I know what you might wish to disclose or not. I simply need to consult with my client.
And I think that's appropriate. Yep. That's why we have you here. So, Mayor Davis, I move the City Commission recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss with legal counsel the proposed moratorium on future building permits in the Grand Prairie Edition in the city of Salina, Kansas, based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Moved in second to recess into executive session for... Moved in second to recess into executive session for discuss with legal counsel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, four to one. Call the meeting back into session. And just to update, there is a motion on the floor at this time.
Okay. Based on some discussion, at this time, I would like to remove my motion to approve ordinance number 20-11023 on second reading.
Second.
And I will withdraw my, were you the second?
No, I was the second.
I was the second. I'll withdraw my second.
All right.
So, shall we try this?
Well, do we, let's, the...
Nothing will happen unless someone tries.
Well...
Unless the city attorney has more comments that he wants to offer, I would move we postpone consideration of ordinance number 20-11023 on second reading until and when the developer has applied for 35 permits.
I don't...
There is a way, I think, Commissioner, if I may, and I, sorry, I was waiting to see what your thought was. If you look at the proposed ordinance, and if you wish to consider allowing whatever number you might choose of additional permits, I think if you look at section 2 of the draft ordinance, we can go ahead and get the ordinance put in place, but it would read along the lines, there's hereby established a 60-day temporary moratorium on new building permits in excess of blank, however many you might wish, total in phases 1 and 2 of the addition. That way, you've acted, the ordinance is in place, the moratorium is in place, but the concept is, as I understood, Mr. Montoya to describe the proposed compromise, I'll ask that he clarify if I've misunderstood in any way, but it would put in place the mechanism for having the moratorium, but allow that whatever limited number of additional permits being issued that you might think appropriate under the circumstances.
So, what we're saying then is that the motion's going to say...
Well, before we do, there is a motion on the floor which needs to either be...
Well, if I could clarify...
...retracted, clarified, or seconded, or...
That's what I wanted to clarify. If I could clarify that with what Mr. Binkston's saying, you're moving us, or suggesting closer to option 2 there, that we approve the ordinance, but with the amendment that the, that the moratorium not go into effect until there are X number of units.
That's correct.
And if I'd be allowed to revise the motion, I would do so.
Please.
Second.
And is that number that the requested, 35?
35 is in phase 1 and 2. I believe that's, I'm going off of what Mr. Montoya suggested as possible compromise.
Any further discussion?
I would, with your permission, I would just like to make a couple of remarks. First of all, I would like to thank Dr. Hanke for his passion and his commitment to both his neighborhood and to public safety, and for folks who were watching last time, Dr. Hanke's integrity was impugned specifically regarding recording a meeting with city staff. And I did do some looking into that, and Kansas is a single consent state, meaning that as long as one party in the conversation or the meeting knows that they're being recorded, it's allowable. And quite frankly, with some of the obfuscation and mistruths and mischaracterizations, I think you are extremely wise to tape your meeting. And something that it revealed to me, and we can all agree about whether that was the gen, disagree about whether that was the gentlemanly thing to do, but it revealed a lot to me about how our organization functions. So, I do want to thank you for that, for doing that, and for sharing that with us, because ultimately, we're responsible for this organization. The other thing that I, the other two things, very briefly, that I want to make clear is, when I look at all the documents, whether it's provided by city staff, or whether it is as a result of Dr. Hanke's records request, which I would request that we make a part of the public record, because I'm going to reference it again and again and again, all the documents from 2008 and 2009 reference 2 phases, 2 phases. And that makes complete sense when you look at this as a 2-phase development. Phase 1 has 30-some houses, phase 2 has the remainder. They talk about the North Peninsula. Well, the North Peninsula is all of phase 2. And I don't know if Roger Williams wrote his affidavit, or if that affidavit was provided for him, but I think somebody might want to check with him and confirm that he really meant that he made that notation in 2008 on a document, when documents clearly state that in 2009, it was still a 2-phase development, and it was not a 3-phase development, and that exception couldn't have been granted when he said it was. So, again, hats off to Grand Prairie, and hopefully, we will keep public safety at the forefront of what we're doing.
I take significant issue with you characterizing our city employees as being of the character that our citizens need to record their conversations with them. I think, I don't know how you expect them to trust you as their leader, or how you can even trust them yourself to give you correct answer to a que, I think that...
And that's a conversation I had with the city manager.
You know, to tell the public that if you're going to talk with our employees, you need to record them, is about as low a character reference that you can give our employees. It's one thing to record someone, it's another thing to mischaracterize the recording or take part of it out of context. But be that as it may, to insinuate that our employees have to be recorded without their being aware of it when you talk to them, I think is just pure scandalous and slanderous. And I take that as a, personally affronted by that statement.
I do feel a sense of obligation to reiterate our organizational commitment to organizational values. That's a point of review for each employee. While the paper trail could have been better, our record could have been better, I'm not prepared to say that we have people that are intentionally trying to mislead or obfuscate. And we had a conversation, I don't know, a year ago or more about some of your concerns about staff in a different department, but I don't recall you and I having a conversation about this topic.
November 12th. I noted it down. When I looked at past records, when I viewed the planning commission meetings, when I looked at the materials presented, I remember contacting you on November 12th, it's the same day I sent you the email and I asked you to call me, and said, how, reassure me that I can trust the material that I'm receiving, because if we don't have that trust, and it is a two-way street, Mayor Davis, no doubt about it, but if we don't have that trust and the material that we're receiving is accurate and unbiased, then, I mean, we're in a heck of a state.
Well, you and I did have that conversation, and my response was, we're getting up to speed, we're conducting a thorough review, and we'll be providing all that information, which we did. Admittedly, what we provided was very thorough, not unnecessarily flattering, it was factual, it was the best that we could pull together based on the paper trail 12 years later. So, I've been trying to be accountable for this issue at this point, and this lack of record keeping does not represent a conspiracy. I don't know how else to put it.
Thank you. We have a, we have a second on the floor, thank you. So, we already voted on that, didn't we? Oh, we haven't, I'm sorry.
Would you like to read that back?
The motion was to postpone ordinance number 20-1102...
No, to, number 2. To approve ordinance number...
To approve, I'm sorry. Number 20-11023, amending it to allow 35 building permits.
In phase 1 and 2. And that was second, okay?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, four to one. We have other business, but I'm going to ask that we take a recess in place for about two minutes, just so that we can clean up our desk here. All right. We will call the meeting back into session. This is probably longer than we could ask anybody under the age of 2 years old to hang out. Our apologies to them. At this point, we will have comments from our outgoing city manager, Joe Hay.
City commissioner.
Well, yeah, we should always have a staff that's comfortable in different roles.
This whole process started about four years ago with an election that will go down in Salina's history. A tie, a coin flip, and then a recount. It was quite a roller coaster ride. During that first election, I want to thank Vice Mayor Hoppick and Commissioner Ryan for their encouragement and support they gave me. Thank you most of all. Two years ago, the citizens of Salina gave me the great honor and opportunity to serve them as a city, Salina city commissioner. Tonight, I wish to thank them all, who have followed me and given this extended opportunity to serve you, and I wish to thank you for your citizenship has allowed the city to become a finer, more just, and more beautiful and livable city. I've had the opportunity to hear from you through your letters, your emails, phone calls, at the commission meetings, neighborhood association meetings, civic organizations, or just coming out to the grocery store or church, walking down the street, and many other encounters. In this process, a most wonderful thing happened to me. Through those thousands of way of communicating, I got to know you, feel and appreciate your goodness, and understand your hearts and wishes, and it has been priceless treasure. It has inspired me to work harder, to do more, to do better, and to never give up. Through all of our encounters and communication, I also got to know your hearts, and a way of fulfilling and enriching your lives and the lives of your children would make you happy and proud to be a citizen of Salina. Many achievements were accomplished, we achieved many accomplishments together, like the downtown revitalization, the police training center, the renew, the river renewal, the Salina Field House, and hopefully to come, the new baseball enterprises. Some have become embroiled in controversy, but it kept me going, pushing, having the resolve not to give up, and I knew that the goal that I was going to achieve, the project or initiative completed would be fulfilled and would make me happy and proud to be a citizen of Salina. I hope my fellow commissioners can move forward with the plastic bag issue. I would like to thank the city staff, especially Mike, Jacob, Shandy, and Holly. Couldn't ask for a better staff to work with. And also, city attorney Greg Binkston for keeping me on the right track. Tonight, I would also like to say goodbye to four other commissioners I have worked with for the past two years. It's truly been an honor. And I want to thank my wife for her patience, Monday meals alone, late-night meetings, and my attitude sometimes. I love you. I will forever hold this opportunity that I had in my heart. Thank you, fellow commissioners, and thank you, citizens of Salina.
I'm going to come down front, I just, it's hard for me to sit still and talk here. Is this close enough to my mouth?
It's not on.
All right. It is on. It's not on.
I can just use this one here.
You're on.
Oh, it is on. All right. Have my wife come up, you can give that camera to Jody. Well, you were warned a little bit.
I was hoping that you were not calling the jury.
Not me. I'm not going to talk about many issues, because issues find us, we don't go out necessarily looking for them, but this is my gift to...
I like that it's on the toilet paper.
That is all recyclable or compostable, but there are going to be more issues than that, that... that that come along. My intentions as your mayor has been to protect your rights as a citizen of Salina, whether you voted for me, whether you agree on an issue, whether we're just diametrically opposed on political issues. But my job is to protect your rights as a citizen, particularly as it relates to interacting with this board. Where rules have been established, I prefer to follow them. Where guidance or directions are needed, then I've tried to follow the process of deriving that policy, always keeping one eye on the city attorney, to make sure that we do it right. You have no idea of how many opportunities we have, particularly that person in the middle, to make an administrative or a parliamentary mistake in a meeting. I think one long meeting, I figured there were about 1,125 opportunities to really mess something up. And our staff does a great job of getting us through most meetings with only two or three mistakes. Now, I'm not going to fall into that trap of last but not least, no, first. You can't do this easily by yourself. You've got to have, you don't have to be married to them. It doesn't have to be an accepted person, but you've got to have somebody that you can talk to and you don't mind what their response is going to be, as long as it's their honest response. Only, I can only talk to one of them about an issue, so you have to have that other person as a sounding board. My policy is if it doesn't sound good before I leave the house, then maybe I ought to think twice about saying it. My fellow commissioners and their spouses, this has really been a fun group to work with, and despite my comments at the end, I'd take these four into battle anywhere. We each have a unique skill and talent, and it makes, I think, very hard to get a difficult issue past us without us as a group realizing what's going on. Spouses do sit at home on Monday nights, wondering where we are. The good thing is, if they really think we might be out carousing, all they have to do is turn on the TV. And I remember one night, I believe, Mayor Blanchett was the meeting. We had a meeting. You hold the record for the 12:30 in the morning meeting, and a young lady was at the end of the agenda. She wanted a stop sign. I believe it was River Run, wasn't it? Or somewhere near there? River Trail, thank you. I can't keep them all straight. And I didn't look at my phone right at the moment, but my wife sent me a message. "It's 11:30 at night. Give her the stop sign." She put her word in there I can't say. I'd like to thank, is Holly in here?
She's not here.
She's not here. She is, I never know what her official title is.
Executive Assistant.
Executive Assistant to the City Manager. Thank you. She makes all this run, coordinates meetings, makes sure that we have what we need. My nurse Rhonda, who's probably, well, we'll watch on TV tonight or tomorrow, the two of them have to work together to coordinate my schedule, and each one of us has someone who's going to have to have their schedules coordinated. And you don't realize how hard of a job that can be when you're trying to get five people together, or if you're meeting with the county, 10 people's schedules to agree so you can have a meeting. The employees, department and division heads, all of our employees, no matter what their job, we have no jobs that are insignificant in this city. This is really a great, great workforce here. My employer, Salina Regional Health Center, for allowing me the flexibility to reschedule things at odd hours to get to some of our impromptu, unexpected meetings. My patients for putting up with those impromptu and unusual reschedulings. We've had some Saturday and Sunday office hours, sometimes just to make space for this. Allison, who's my trainer, I have a trainer now, thanks to Pam, but I found sitting in that chair for six or seven hours was really hurting my back, and I can do it now without having any back pain, so way to go, Allison. The entire Parks and Recorations Department for pulling that Christmas tree together. I think of all of our accomplishments, that's the one that meant the most to me. My wife was asking me for six months, "How come we don't have a Christmas tree?" And when Christmas lights started going up, she says, "How can a city this big not have a Christmas tree?" Then I found out that we had a Christmas tree until the tree died. So we now have a Christmas tree. Donations can be made. It's called the Mayor's Christmas Tree. We may come up some other name, but you can send a donation to the Director of Finance, Debbie Peck, and there is a separate account to which we have contributed solely for the purpose of the Christmas tree. Maybe next year we'll have two Christmas trees. Three people who I was hoping were going to be here, and they aren't here, Judy Larson, Joan Ratslaff, and Normal Mantle. The names might not, well, I guess you all probably are familiar with their names. These are citizens who show up at every meeting except tonight, who I think keep us on our toes. You don't always have to agree with them, but they're going to tell you exactly what's on their mind. Those are the folks who I really consider my true boss, because if they're thinking it, you can rest assured hundreds and thousands of other people are thinking it as well. Now we're at the last but not least. These three people sitting here, two of whom are left-handed, but we don't hold that against Mike. It is impossible to describe the difference between running your own business, your own family, and running a city or an organization that has to abide by government rules. Some things just don't make sense initially, but it's the law and you've got to follow the law. These folks really keep us quiet. I've found out that city clerk does a whole lot more than just take notes or take meetings, I mean, minutes. In fact, legally, you may be the most indispensable person in the room here, but you really have a great staff. And we're not going to always get it right. You're not going to always agree with us, but we do what we think is best for the city of Salina. Thank you very much for allowing me the privilege to serve as your mayor, and looking forward to truly making this the Renaissance City of Kansas. Thank you.
Okay, we will now start the organizational meeting. I will start with item 10.1. I will administer oath of office to the new commissioners. So I would like to call forward to the microphone in the middle, Carl Ryan, Trent Davis, and Rod Franz. I ask you to please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear.
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
-and the Constitution of the State of Kansas-
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
-and faithfully discharge the duties-
And faithfully discharge the duties.
-of the Office of City Commissioner-
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
-and in for the City of Salina, Kansas-
And in for the City of Salina, Kansas.
-so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I will now call the organizational meeting of January 13th, 2020, to order and call roll. Commissioner Davis-
Here.
Commissioner Franz-
Here.
Commissioner Hodges-
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick-
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
I will now accept nominations for mayor and chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
I move, oh, I move to nominate Commissioner Hoppick as mayor and chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. I will now accept nominations for acting mayor and vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
I move to nominate Commissioner Hodges as acting mayor and vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. I will now turn the gavel over to the new mayor.
Do you like to reassign us? At this time, I would call Former Commissioner Hay forward.
You want this?
Must feel to be former commissioner already. We don't have access to where we're supposed to stand, Joe. Joe, I would like to thank you for your time and your dedication to this commission. As you stated earlier, four years ago, I supported you when you ran for city commission, knowing that you had a true love for this community. As some of you may know, Joe is an avid scout. In fact, I just learned earlier today that he's been a scout since he was eight years old. I will let you do the calculation of how many years that's for him. Joe has brought these scouting values with him to this commission. He was one that could always be trusted, was helpful, friendly, courteous, and above all, honest. Joe, I wish you luck with your retirement, not only from this commission, but from your day-to-day job. On behalf of myself and the citizens of Salina, I would like to say thanks. Those who do Facebook will be seeing more fishing stories out of you in the future.
And bacon.
And bacon stories, yes. At this time, I would also like to call up Former Mayor Davis. Having trouble? Okay, let's do this, okay. Just stand here where I can kind of see. How's that? This is one individual that's going to be hard to follow. Mr. Davis has done an excellent job of leading us through this last year. I have admired his professionalism when dealing with tough situations. I am yet to hear him raise his voice in anger or disgust. No one has taken this job more seriously than Dr. Davis. In November of 2018, Dr. Davis graduated from the University of Kansas Public Management Center's Certified Public Manager Program. This required Dr. Davis from January of 2018 to November of 2018 to attend a two-day-a-month class in either Topeka or Latha or the KU Edwards campus. Mayor Davis, I would like to thank you for your leadership, and personally, thank you for being a wonderful mentor, and hopefully I can follow in your footsteps. I can truly say that I not only consider you a fellow commissioner, but I truly consider you a friend. Thank you very much for your service. That's the user hole when you need to get Pam's attention out.
I know who's going to have the gavels.
Yeah.
Before I get into my comments about the upcoming year, I would like to do a couple of introductions and thank yous. I am fortunate to have a large part of my family here today. First, I have my mother, Shirley Hoppick, who moved here from Wichita and lives in Eaglecrest, and my brother Doug, who is here from Kansas City. I also have here today my mother-in-law, Joe Goings, who made the trip from Nebraska to be with us. Thank you all. I am fortunate enough to have all three of my children here today also. Erin McCorkle and her husband Preston, whom both work for USD 305, along with their three children. More importantly, three of my grandchildren, Beckett, Greeley, and Maisie. Amy Hamilton and her husband Taylor made the trip from Kansas City to be here today, and along with them, they brought their daughter London. Also here today is my son Austin, whom I have the pleasure of working with daily, and his wife Lisa. I truly am blessed. I also want to thank my wife Polly for her support during my long, as my time as commissioner. As the others up here can tell you, this job does take time away from family. When looking at my schedule as mayor, it appears there would be additional time required, and I appreciate her understanding of how much time and effort is needed to be mayor. As I was leaving the house this morning, Polly looked at me and said, "We have a crazy life, but I wouldn't want it any other way." And for that, I'm thankful. I'm sorry. It would be a crime if I didn't thank my coworkers at land title service. Without them, I would not be able to be out of the office as much as I am doing the city's business. I may be prejudiced, but I will say that they are the best employees one could have, and they are the reason I am able to be sitting in this chair here today. I want to say it's an honor and a privilege to be the 119th mayor of the city of Salina. As mayor, I understand that my job is to facilitate our commission meetings, make sure that we handle all issues in a professional manner. We, as a commission, must realize that conflict is not a problem, but how we handle that conflict could be considered a problem. We will continue to deal with issues that at times can be complex and do not always have a black and white answer. Our job is to work through the information presented to us and come to a resolution that is best for the city of Salina and its citizens. It's funny how things work out. Earlier today, I had a good friend of mine, Phil Coleman, bring in one of his motivational thoughts for greater success papers, which he does on a routine basis. And on that sheet was the following, "Let's keep our language and talk as positive as possible." Think these would be great words for us to live by in the year 2020. Over the last two years, I have enjoyed working with our city staff and look forward to the continued collaboration on some exciting projects we have before us. We, as a community, must realize that it is not always easy to be in a leadership role with a city. As we know, with every decision, there will always be a group who believes the wrong decision has been made. Pleasing some 50,000 people all the time is basically impossible. I believe our staff, to be honest, dedicated, and hardworking. Are they perfect? No. They are human, and yes, humans do make mistakes. Please remember that the city of Salina's staff are our neighbors, and that the decisions this commission makes with their direction not only affect you, but will affect their families as well. In 2020, we will continue to see a rebirth of our downtown. When looking at the north end of Santa Fe, we see a tremendous amount of progress being made on the first phase of the historic Lee Building Housing Project. When looking at the south end of Santa Fe, we see the Homewood Suites Hotel, Yaya's Bistro Restaurant, and Starbucks nearing completion. As you drive between these two projects, you will also notice several new businesses and additional construction on where new businesses will be moving into later this year. We are also looking at a new arts and entertainment ordinance, which will help to bring new and innovative activities to our downtown. The city of Salina will continue to work closely with our partners, the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce, Salina Community Economic Development Organization, and the Salina Airport Authority to bring more jobs to Salina. This past year, we saw One Vision move to Salina, and as the end of 2019, they were- employing more than 65 individuals, with additional employees being hired in the future. There are currently several business opportunities that are actively being pursued. Landing any one of these prospects would be a major boost to the Salina economy. I believe we are getting close to finalizing a lease agreement with Sling County on the Expo Center grounds. It appears that we, that all parties involved want to see this property enhanced somewhat, but doing it at a cost that makes sense for the taxpayer. 2020 will present us with another opportunity for a private public project. Salina Baseball Enterprises has brought a proposal to the city, which has spent significant time working on. This project would help us to address some of the deferred maintenance issues, drainage problems we have while providing a first-class facility for our community. My hope would be that we can finance the city's portion without being a burden to the taxpayer. That would be done by increasing the transient guest tax. We must also, while dealing with this, address the issue of how we will set up reserves to help fund the replacement of turf when it becomes necessary. One final thought. With the lack of staffing within our local media, we need to find a way to get information about city commission business out to the public. We must look at our city webpage to see if it is being used to its fullest potential. And based on the continued use of social media, it would appear that we need to challenge staff to find ways to engage the public and help get information out to the citizens of Salina. I look forward to the next year in serving as your mayor. I am excited to see Salina continue to move in a positive direction. Thank you. And to prove that I'm not the perfect mayor, I've already skipped something. We have a new commissioner on board that I want to welcome, and that's Mr. Rod Franz. And I wanted to give him the opportunity to say a few words if he wished to.
Well, I have a two-hour speech written. But given the hour, I think I'm going to keep it simple and just thank those who supported me in this endeavor, and to say that I'm looking forward to an interesting and challenging two years.
And I believe that there's no other business to come before us. I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Second. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Chris, I hope you did.